All right, calling to order the Town of Millville Planning Board Meeting for Monday, November 13th, 2023, 6:00 PM, Millville Town Hall, 290 Main Street, Millville, Mass. We'll start with roll call.
Jason Mailey.
Pam Williams.
Justin Allen. Those are all who are here. Okay. General business, we have some minutes to approve. We have the minutes from Planning Board Meeting, October 2nd and October 23rd.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 2nd.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Okay, let's vote.
Jason Mailey, aye.
Pam Williams, aye.
Justin Allen, aye.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 23rd.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Jason Mailey, aye.
Pam Williams, aye.
Justin Allen, aye. Okay, all right. We do not have anyone from the public this evening. So we'll move on to the CMRPC zoning bylaw diagnostic review.
Sounds good. So I printed out, it's the last thing in your packet, printed it a little bit just to start discussing things we want to look at. This is every instance of the word permitted versus permitted. But it also has the whole sign bylaw in it, so I thought it would be, you know, we can look at the permitted thing, we can look at the sign bylaw. I also wrote down one other thing. Article two is just missing a few overlay districts. It's not listed here. Just in the bylaws in general, there's a list of all the districts and we're missing the overlay districts. They're just not listed. So I think that's just something we can bring to town meeting easy. It needs to just list.
There's really not a lot of discussion. It's just presented.
We just need to list it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I thought we should do that. I didn't write it down yet, but I'll, I'll just put up a warrant article like we have in the past. And CMRPC also mentioned with the districts, what do we have, four of them, that we should have a statement for each of them, like a purpose statement?
Definition.
Like a definition of each. I looked up all their zoning bylaws from other towns, only found one town that's done it. So it, it's not common, but maybe it's the new best practice. So it's something I can bring to you guys next time, or we can look at it today.
I mean, that sounds reasonable.
I think so.
Just for, just for, you know, constituents, just like, hey, what does Village Center mean?
Right. I couldn't find any, any help for, you know, examples, but maybe if you guys want to brainstorm tonight, just think of ideas of what sort of words we'd want to put in there.
Okay.
That's an option for tonight.
Just circling back on this about the word permitted.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Are we looking to change the language, you know, requiring permit as opposed to, you know, what's the?
Yeah.
That's kind of the feel of it, right?
I wonder if it depends on each of these, because some of them we might want to say.
Allowed as opposed to?
Allowed as opposed to, yeah. Permissible.
Yeah, this, this was definitely a problem in the past with enforcement at the building inspector level.
Yeah.
At the police department level for, for certain things. Certainly defining things that are permitted via a permit, and then maybe on the flip side of that, changing it to allowed by right. Something where it's very clearly defined about like what you're, what you're allowed to do, like just by right versus what you need, you know, a permit for.
Right. Yeah. Do you guys want to go through this and, and just look at each one and see?
Yeah.
If you have any comments on the word permitted on each of these sections? So I just pulled out the sections of each. You can see this one is, "No building, structure or land shall be used for any purpose or in any manner other than as permitted within the district."
Or permitted.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that.
I think it's permissible, right? I assume that's what they mean.
Yeah, I really think it's just a, I think they all have that dual meaning.
Yeah, I know.
There's a duality to it that doesn't work for a legal argument. And you've seen a lot more of these than we have. Is that, is there similar situations in different towns?
I've seen it in other towns and I think it's confusing.
Yeah.
Is there, is it appropriate to have something that sort of defines permitted, meaning you need to go before a board and be like?
I think if we can take out all the situat-, all the cases where that isn't the case, then we could actually, I would put a definition, say permitted means need a permit.
That makes sense.
But we should go through this and decide which one of those is not true.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, because this, this first one here, it means either permitted or just, you know, allowed by right. I think this means permissible. This first one. I don't think they mean anything that requires a permit.
So when you say permissible, you're just saying by right? Okay.
Or by, or by permit. I'm leaving it allow, like, open to, because this is such a, this first one is just, "Any building, structure or land shall be used for, no, no building, structure or land shall be used for any purpose or in any manner other than as allowed within the district in which such a building, structure or land is located." So that allowableness might be by a permit or it might be by right, but.
Allowed by permit.
Yeah, there's one above that too, in the first one. They use that as permitted on one portion of the lot may be extended 30 feet into the other portion.
Okay, so.
There's a lot of them.
To, to your point, maybe where it says is permitted, where we believe they should go before a board and get a permit, we change to allowed by permit? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking for that.
And in the other situations, can we just say permissible? Because that's not.
Yeah.
That's not as confusing.
Right.
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 It's just in other words.
Whatever we do to just separate them.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's clear.
So the next one, that's also not about the permit, it's about being allowed.
Allowed, yeah.
So permissible.
Right.
And then 301. This is that same language as in 103.
Yeah. Allowed.
Any manner other than that is permitted.
At least 301, 2, 3, and 4 are more definitive.
Oh, you can look right here. 301, Y means use permitted. 2, use allowed upon issuance of a special permit. Use allowed issuance of, so I feel like right there, it's saying use permitted, use allowed, yeah. Kind of declares right there that it means something different.
Marijuana, no outside storage is allowed. No storage of marijuana is allowed. Then shall be permitted, or should, can we change that to like requiring, requiring permit?
The number of marijuana retailer licenses that shall be.
Allowed by permit.
Yeah.
Except, and then same thing with signs, except as allowed by permit. Someone that would sell the Polish club in the town hall.
Grandfathered.
Is it though?
I don't know.
This one?
No idea. No idea. Not my department.
Yes, I know. Ciao. Signs shall be allowed. Allowed.
Yeah, I think if we change some of these even just to say allowed instead of, you know.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But tell me if you see one that you, you know, you want to discuss. Because I can, I'll make a whole list of these in the end. I just want to give you all of the text so you can read them.
501, like the first sentence says, you know, no, no second, no sign, no sign shall be allowed or permitted. I would change to allowed. If any part of flashes, whatever. And then it says, no, no sign shall be placed within a projecting or a public way except mark is permitted.
Yeah.
Which, again, I think that would be allowed by permit.
Yeah, because we're talking about the permit.
Yep. But that's all in the span of two sentences.
Right, I know.
Right.
Yeah.
Someone really liked that word.
Yeah.
And it means like different.
Two things.
Different things to different people.
Yeah, exactly. B here for, it could be temporary sign permits.
Yeah.
Instead of temporary permitted signs, which also is not grammatically correct.
Yeah. Temporary.
Permanent sign permit.
Yeah. Maybe allowed.
And then C, change permitted to allowed.
Home occupation.
Yeah, because allowed basically.
Allowed signs for agricultural.
And those, and you don't need a permit for that. You don't need any.
Right.
You know, permission for that.
Right, yeah. So allowed, yep. My, yeah, my question is on the home occupation one, I feel like that's the only place where the, you, the word permitted makes sense because it's permitted.
The sign's not, even though if the home occupation is.
Pertaining to a permitted home occupation, a home occupation with the permit. So that one is the only one to me that makes, it should stay that way, but you know, I don't want to.
Yeah, 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 yeah. One sign not to exceed four square feet in the surface pertaining to.
Home occupation permit of?
An approved.
An approved? Home occupation?
An approved. I feel like I'm correcting like grammar papers. This would be great. Kids brought their homework for me to help with. I'm better at math than I was at. My favorite move was, well, how do you think this should be solved?
Yeah.
And again, the ambiguity on number three for that is that one announcement signed for bed and breakfast and of not more than four, whether or not it's a permitted bed and breakfast.
I know, it doesn't say it there.
Right.
Yeah. So there's a few places we might want to add approved in.
Well, just like in five.
Yeah, five as well. I was thinking approved, right?
Yep.
Permitted to approved?
Yeah.
And for permitted signs for commercial are allowed by permit?
Yeah. Yeah, where is it written that, that you need a permit for commercial, automotive, industrial? And that you don't need a permit for residential and agricultural? Is that written anywhere?
I don't know. I thought it might just be a common practice.
Yeah. I might want that to be.
I mean, like I said, I didn't, I don't know enough to know if agriculture requires it for a small sign for.
I can ask the building commissioner which signs.
Yeah, this is, this is something we'd want to.
Yeah, Joe will know about this.
Put in front of, well, and just have them weigh in.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And that's what I, I did that first time. When we had some definitions, I made sure he looked at them and agreed. So I'll do it with this as well and say, which ones require permit, which ones don't? We'll make sure that's written into the bylaw. Do you agree with all these word changes?
And you'll say, I have to look at the bylaw.
You know, E3 has a pretty good language when it comes to, basically the last sentence, as permitted by the Board of Selectmen or as permitted by.
Right, that's a fine language.
Yeah.
As.
Well, it's actually building inspector that signs permits.
Yeah, unless indicated otherwise. I don't know where it's indicated otherwise, but I'll read through it again. Temporary. I think in general, we want to clarify more than just that language when it pertains to the sign by law. I think we want to do a, a bigger overhaul, but I thought this would be a start to just looking at it while we're doing this other thing. So I have to go back now because it says no sign permit shall be required for temporary permitted signs. So I was wrong before because there is no permit for a temporary sign. So I'm going to switch that to just temporary sign.
You, my friend, got stuck in a conundrum there. Yes, and then customary, customary home occupations and signs shall be permitted in accordance with article 5 of the zoning bylaw.
There's a few, shall be permitted only upon the issuance of a special permit.
I would still change the language.
Still change it to allowed only upon the issuance of a special permit. Is that okay with you guys?
Yep.
Where is that?
502.
Yeah.
Accessory apartments, and then it's also in home occupation B.
And then 503A.
It's in A.
Shall be allowed.
Yeah, allowed.
Like by right?
Yeah, the one that says as a matter of right.
Yeah.
So it already, yeah, it has it, it just, yeah, I'll change it to allowed as a matter of right. But I.
Do you need the as a matter?
I don't think so. I'd rather by as well, because I, we use that term in other places. So I'd rather, if you're searching for it, for some reason, you want to see everything by right.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll change that.
Allowed by.
Allowed by right. Yeah, and A6, I think that's confusing because some signs need a permit, some signs don't. So signs shall be allowed in accordance with Article 5.
I just put them allowed by.
Just leave it as, yeah. Reference that other section to see if it needs a permit instead of using confusing language here.
Now on B1, where it says the use of the dwelling unit or where permitted in accessory structure, but you need a permit for the accessory structure.
Do you always?
I thought so.
Maybe.
Well, it says special permit previous to that. Were allowed by permit.
I think where permitted, they mean where an accessory structure is allowed. I'll look and see, but maybe we say allowed.
So the same.
Where an accessory structure is allowed by permit.
Yeah.
I would have thought when they were writing this, they were, so we got to find another word.
Oh, no. People don't even think about it.
They just kick the problem down to us.
It's just common, I think, people, when they, when they write, they think it's the way they talk, and they don't realize that when it's put on, onto paper, they're not the one speaking anymore.
Yeah.
And they don't realize that other people are going to read it differently than what's in their head.
Or the actua-, what is it? I can't remember grammar, but actuation point?
Yeah, the, yeah, where you put the emphasis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Door.
No, that was a, he got in. It's open. Yeah. They have another meeting in the other room.
Permitted to allowed.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sounds weird though.
It does.
Say allowed on, I think even we should maybe change that whole line. No more than one non-resident employee may be.
I mean, is that.
Employed or something.
Mean that there can only be one non-resident employee?
I think that's what they're trying to keep.
In the business?
Yeah.
Keep employee count down because of parking and stuff like that. Not sure it's based on reality, but I think that's the nature of it. Because they've said, they've said in other parts, they don't want more than one non-resident employee there.
But does this mean that they don't want them on the premises or that the business can't have more than one non-resident employee?
Or on the premises at one time.
At one time. It doesn't even say that though. It just says on the premises. So technically you could say, well, you had Kelly here on Monday and you had Frank here on Tuesday. It's, you know, it's not allowed.
So if we were to change it, we would want to say something like, no more than one resident employee shall be allowed on the premises at.
At one time.
At one time.
I think that's fair.
So if you wanted to have like a salon.
Some of the work Mondays or some of the work Tuesdays, yeah.
Like, you know, one chair, you can have like, you know, different people come in on that one.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think it's, it's about traffic and not having a whole bunch of people there at once, but it doesn't matter if you have a different person on Tuesday than you have on Thursday.
Does 606 give a headache? Residents' districts that in, residents' districts, the use will be reasonably comparable with other uses permitted as a right of the same district. My head hurts. Right?
Yeah.
That's a downward spiral right there. I'm calling my lawyer. Hey, Matt.
I think such is such a weird word there. I always like said, but that's the way it is. Said special permit. Such is such a strange, archaic word.
Well, if you're going to change it, change it.
Yeah. I may put that one in.
I agree.
It just gets really, such is a word that also has multiple meanings. Said does not.
Said clearly references.
Clearly references the beginning of the sentence.
Such is more of a plural, right?
Yeah, such objects as these.
Yeah, because you wouldn't say said.
Yeah. It's such a confusing word.
Said you.
Yeah, I, I would prefer said, just if we're going through.
You're going to change some language on that anyways. So instead of permitted on 2, I would say allowed is, that seems like it's in line with the language, allowed as of right.
Yeah, I'll change to allowed by right if.
Yeah. And on 704, it looks like the parentheses cover requiring permit, so we could change may also be allowed. Were intended as a condominium on land not so divided or subdivided, because then it says of this chapter regarding special permit.
Yep.
Same thing on the next one, requiring dwellings. Allowed. So the number of dwellings, dwelling units allowed shall not exceed the, that unless otherwise determined over the planning board, so.
It's already stated that the planning board's involved.
Yep. Same thing later on in the paragraph too. Roadways except as allowed. Allowed by this bylaw and approved by the planning board. That's just really about restrictions.
Yeah.
804 seems like a layup. It's just allowed by right on both.
Yeah.
Yep. And then.
And then allowed.
Used allowed by special permit.
By special permit, yeah.
Was a nice one. Shall be allowed by.
Wireless, I think, is by special permit. I can add that in.
Yep. That's actually a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'll write this up in the language of a warrant article for next time.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
It's going to be a long article.
Yep, but at least it'll be very simple.
Yeah, well, people are kind of wondering, why would someone write that like that?
Oh, yeah.
No, that would be big.
Yeah, that's just, it's a small change, but it's a big change.
It does.
You're not going to run into issues in the future where someone says, well, it says permitted, it means I don't have to have a permit, it means allowed. Be clear, this is what it does mean and this is where it doesn't. Yeah. And then a few other little things we mentioned, so I'll, I'll pull those out and hopefully we can have one of those grab bag articles as well, where we just have specific words we want to change here and there, or maybe even tack it onto the same warrant. I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah. That's a small one. That's a small one. The signed by law itself, I think we should go over in detail. I think we want someone besides us, besides me. CMRPC might be able to just give us a little more. Push on it, I don't know if they have any, any recommendations, or even if Jack does. I just don't wanna be the only one to, to say that the signed by law looks good or doesn't.
Okay.
So I'll try to get some, some more eyes on it. Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, I'll ask him too, yeah, I just wanna make sure it's not just me making it up. So I'll get some, some, yeah.
Is it, is it consistent with the other towns? Or are they in the same kind of boat that we are?
That's the problem.
The people to the north of us are, have been battling with a new cannabis location because of signage and they're. I'm not entirely sure if they spent money or lost money battling it, but.
Thankfully it got.
Resolved.
Resolved, yeah.
But it was going there.
It was going there, yeah, yeah, so.
And that was simply because.
There's things like that, yeah.
They overstepped a little bit, the town overstepped a little bit by restricting signage for a specific business type.
Type.
And had no basis on the bylaw, so it's.
I'm very.
I'd be very interested in getting this language fixed.
Very versed in that, I can tell you that, when it comes to free speech and signage, I'm very versed in that. Anything else, though, I'm not, I don't wanna be more confident than I am. But yeah, when it comes to restricting a class of speakers, it's a big deal. And I don't think I've noticed that in Millville. And it's very clear in another town that.
Yeah.
They didn't, they wanted to just protect the town's image, and so they thought if they restrict this class of speaker, that it'd be okay, but it isn't.
Right.
It just isn't allowed. It is a free speech thing, so.
And they're changing their bylaws under duress.
Yeah, they gotta change it quick.
Quickly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, no, I would, I think the language would be way better off to be clear on.
Yeah, I haven't noticed, I'll look through, I haven't noticed any issues with free speech that we have, but, but I can, I can definitely speak to that.
And the way the lawyer presented that was.
He was great.
I was like, huh, that's, yeah.
Okay, do we wanna move on to the master plan discussion regarding 181 Main Street?
Yeah, 181 Main Street, I think Pam also wants to mention 179 Thayer as well, so.
What, what was that, Dylan?
179 Thayer as well.
Yes.
We talk about.
You know, I did some research to try and, you know, I looked at the, this diagnostic that we've been going through. And, I mean, it's from 2017 and now we're going into 2024. And, you know, just out of curiosity, I looked through Patriot properties and put them by year, properties by year. And I saw that like, from 1984 to 1991, there were only 95 new properties in Millville. I did it kind of by decade, 91 to 2001, there were 103. 2002 to 2011, there were 119. Now, for the last decade, there were only 20 new properties built here in Millville. And Millville needs, I mean, our financial status is, is bad. And we need either commercial or residential, I know residential then now puts it on the schools. But we are at a 40% low and they are possibly building new schools. And, and I really believe that we, we need to do this low hanging fruit, although this one was great. I never realized that it was so, so bad and complicated. I'm hoping that, you know, there's something that we can find out about as to why, like I saw a couple of years ago, 179 Thayer came before the Board of Selectmen only because the then building commissioner was receiving calls on it and he recused himself because he was a Thayer Street resident. And I was wondering if anyone knew what happened to that. You know, there's been no type of.
I mean, there's obviously an owner of the property and if they're not looking to develop it.
But they were.
They were, but then, you know, we know for a fact that we're having water issues. We know for a fact that they, there's not a lot of utilities out there. And, you know, like, and I got your point, and, you know, on average from 84 to 2011, there was pretty steady amount of houses being built. And I just don't know if the lots are still available, like, what do we have for open lots right now? And I get what you mean about developments, but if you look at where the real estate market is in Millville, and I am a resident since 2008, we don't have the best reputation, you know, and a lot of it's the school system, you know, a lot of it is that we don't have gas, we don't have, much like the commercial aspect of this.
Does anyone know?
We don't have a lot of attractive features.
But people still do move here. And, you know, I'm just wondering if anyone knew what happened with.
I got you.
179 Thayer, you know, cause I know they were really interested in building.
If it's the property, I think, if, if it's what I think it is, I think it had to do with water.
Yeah.
And I had heard that someone had told them they would have to connect to Blackstone Water.
Which we know how expensive that's been because of the MES situation now.
Correct, but who would have told them, how would that get relayed?
Could have been any number of.
I've never seen anything on the, on the Board of Selectmen meetings.
We can look at old minutes, yeah, I can.
I think it's also the, the reputation of the town, but, like, I, you know, when I was trying to put an addition on my house, it was very difficult to pull a permit.
And, yeah.
And I'm a, you know, and that's a social revenue. And so we're better now, but how do we relay that to the public?
There's nothing we can really do about land that's already owned by a developer. It's up to them whatever they wanna do with it.
Right.
But, like you were saying to me, Pam and I were talking about town-owned property. If there is property that the town owns, that could be marketed in a way to increase housing or used for any sort of development that might bring people to town.
If we lay the groundwork through these changes that we're doing and then shop the town-owned properties to somebody who might wanna come in and put in another development.
Right.
That's how we could go about it.
Did they not do a big purge on, remember?
They had an auction.
Yeah.
On some properties.
2018.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know what's.
Those were mostly smaller ones, like.
I'll take a look.
There's one.
On the corner there were Bruno Antiques, that was one of them.
There's a, there's a list in the master plan of the properties that were owned, at least owned at that time.
Right.
So I can go through the master plan and see.
But now, what about the King property, that's 42 acres? I couldn't find anything that said there was any kind of, kind of conservation, you know, I read the deed.
Who owns it?
The town.
The town, yeah, so that.
I mean, in town, it's called the King property, but it's 42 acres and.
I'll look into that one, it's, that one's named in the master plan as well, right? I've seen it.
Ah, it is, but it's weird because it does say conservation, where I saw it.
So is there a conservation overlay on it, I assume?
I mean, it's right up there on Chestnut Hill Road.
Chestnut Hill Road?
I think its address is 72, but it may not have.
Yeah, here it is.
Land on the street, it mostly may be.
So it's got very minimal frontage.
Right.
Oh, luckily it has frontage, we'll see what, how much, but it has frontage.
But if it were a development, they just make streets right into it.
They, they have almost enough, they could, they'd probably have to, they might have to go to ZBA depending on how big their road is, but 297, that's plenty, yeah. Let me see what they have, so they are zoned.
Forest area, is it?
They're zoned Village Center in the front and Village Residential in the back. Let's see if we have.
I mean, it was obtained.
Okay, so it's kind of to the west of this, of Millville Elementary and all that, all those, all those woods.
Right, and I mean, without actually going there, if no one has been there, you don't know what type of land it is, is it all hills, is it all rock?
So I know, I know in this area, on Berthalet, that it's a, I think it was a big drop, but I don't, I don't know that property that will.
So it's next to the Millville Elementary School.
So basically in the back, yeah.
So the, I'm just guessing they're gonna have water issues. They're not in wetlands, you're right, there's no wetlands there.
They got beavers.
Yeah, I think, I think it's definitely something we could look at, you know, this is just a quick, I just looked quickly, but.
I mean, I know the town hasn't used it, the same as they haven't done anything with 181 Main. I mean, but why?
To me, 181 Main makes sense, it, the, the frontage issues alone, I get it, it's a weird property to, to figure out, but I think that's great that we could maybe figure something out for it. Even if all we accomplish is cleaning it up, I'd be happy.
Right, sure.
It would be safer for kids and teens and, you know, whatever else is going on out there.
Back there anyway.
It would just make me feel better as a person. But if there is another property like this, that, you know, we could pursue as something bigger than just a park, you know, if we could pursue getting a developer to, to put some housing in there, put some homes for people.
Yeah. What, you mentioned that, that doing in Menden is, is tremendous.
Yeah, Menden has CPA, they have Community Preservation Act funds, so they have a extra tax money.
They have a line item budget.
There's a line item budget for it, but they are soliciting bids to have a developer put in some housing with most of it being affordable units. And the town will sort of, you know, pick a developer to do this project based on what the plan looks like and then give the land to the developer in the end. Some sort of agreement, but yeah.
2%, I think, 2% needs to be a ten.
We're not, yeah, Millville is also not at the percentage needed for affordable homes for people. So it would be good if we could get one affordable house in, I'd be happy, you know.
Does that open doors to, to other things if we hit a threshold that says?
That means, that means no one can, that means you have rights as a town. It shuts the door.
Okay.
Right now, right now, anyone can come in with a 40B and the town has no say in it, basically.
Oh, okay.
So if someone wanted to come and do the 40B, they get approval.
You're like this.
Yep.
They have to own the property already, correct?
The developer just develop it on their own.
Oh, that's, that's.
They buy property, they do it on their own.
If someone wanted to come in here, they would have to.
They can just do whatever they want.
We would have.
If they buy enough land, they can just do it.
Like, just for instance, Thayer Street.
Yeah.
If they came in about Thayer Street, we'd have no control, no oversight on what they put in.
If they wanna put affordable housing in, the town has no say on how that project goes.
Milford?
I mean, there is, there's a few things they have say.
I don't know much about Milford.
Not a lot.
All right, how about Route 20? Route 20 in Auburn has that ginormous place, 140 in Bellingham. They're all just ginormous.
Yep.
Apartments.
Yep, and if they, yeah.
It's so much nicer when the town has some say over that. So while you're under 10%, it's great that the town has this ability to try to push forward 40Bs that are friendly. Get affordable housing in that is attractive. It looks nice, it, it's acceptable to the people who are gonna live there and the neighbors.
I mean, Millville Heights is, is actually a nice, I mean, it's owned by Millville Uxbridge Housing.
Right.
I don't know where Millville fits into it, even though it's in here.
Yeah, and that's separate, that, that's something that can definitely be accomplished too, but.
And they're little like condo type things.
You just gotta remember, like, if you don't, if you don't set yourself up for protection on 40B and you get a 40B, now all of a sudden, you're not, you're not, say it the right way, you're gonna be bringing in a lot more people using the resources of the town, i.e. the schools.
Right.
So that means your school budgets go up, and if you don't have the balance of taxes coming in to offset that.
Right, on a 40B.
Yeah.
Now we're in a bigger hole. So it's a, the balance.
It's, it's nice to do it slowly and, and on our terms.
Yep.
So if we can, if we can, the town is something, you know, if we spearhead a project that, that makes homes affordable for people to live here, A, we get the tax base, we get, you know, developers to come in and.
Propose.
You know, propose something.
As opposed of.
You get people to frequent any businesses in town and make it more attractive for people to shut up, set up shop here.
Right, because there's more residents to frequent.
Yeah, it's not.
Is it?
There's an opportunity here, but I don't know how big it is.
Is it a master plan goal to achieve 10%?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, beyond that, it's a Massachusetts requirement, you know.
I've learned about, a lot about this from watching the other towns, that the, they want to move low-income housing into the more rural communities to, to develop a balance as opposed to having them in just certain urban districts. So it's a big focus on the state to do this. So like Dylan was saying, if, if someone comes in, you really don't have any control if you're nowhere near that 10%. So there's not even a consideration, they could do whatever they want, as high as they want.
If we have.
The bylaws don't come into effect at all, hike anything?
Not state regulation.
Oh, wow.
Until you're at 10%.
But given this, the septic and, and no water in septic, they wouldn't be able to do anything like that.
If we're able to, to market a property for a developer to want to do this, it's just, it is very difficult when you don't have water, you don't have sewer. It's hard.
Well, look at North Avenue and Menden, just all of that, same thing, they don't have the water so capacity, they don't have a septic system that can do it. So they don't have the, so the model land that they would require to use septic and for water in the distances, they need to be away from each other, makes the parcel.
So much smaller.
Not attractive.
Yeah.
It's a big parcel of land, but very minimal. So it's, and these guys don't wanna do a 40 unit, they wanna do a 400 unit.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause then it's just.
Cause then they can make more money.
Can be done, right, I mean, I was going by.
But again, it makes the slot unattractive, because you need the certain square footage per unit. So it's not, it can be done, sure, but nobody wants, why would, would you wanna spend half of your money on a septic system for the whole project? Like, cause then you're talking, you're talking, you're not getting the benefit of dividing. So if you're gonna spend a lot of money on a septic system, the way you would do the math is you would divide it, cost per unit.
Right.
And if you're only getting 40 units out of it, 800,000 turns into, it just jacks it up. And then you're no longer affordable housing.
Right, or just regular housing, I was coming down 122 and I noticed ADC, ADC Septic building on that condominium complex that's right on the corner of 122, across from the courthouse, the big condo, so. That's even though Uxbridge isn't septic any longer, that was built when there was septics and ADC Septic had their sign and they were, so something like that is still feasible with septic, right?
How many units are in those condos?
I don't know, seems like quite a few.
It's a math thing.
Yeah, it depends on the location, it depends on the soil.
To do it after the fact with new regulations?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, mother, new regulations.
Are very different, yeah.
I'm sure the budget is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know anything about septic regulations.
You know, you look at the old pictures of my house and septic is tiny and small and it's not in the way, and now we got a big hump. Cause the, the water table rises, it, it's new regulations, it has to be bigger than it used to be.
Oh, wow.
Things change.
So I think that's a lot of, I think those are a lot of the reasons why things move at a slow pace.
Yeah.
Is because there's more factors than, than you really know.
But let me look at King.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's in the master plan, I'm sure of it, I don't know the details, but if there's something that the planning board could, could look at or pursue, or even just, you know, work on these bylaw changes to make something more attractive.
And, and like the town, I, I mean, I don't know when the, the, does the town put in money so that Planning Board can have some kind of a budget? Even if we need to take, you know, put in some money to beautify the, the Main Street. You know, clean it up, I mean, I try to walk, you try to walk down Main Street and there's one area that the sidewalks are just.
So I can work with, I don't know if it's called DPW or Highway here, but that would be something that you would do in town meeting as well, is to allocate funds from free cash.
Even, and.
It wouldn't be in our budget, it would be something that we ask the town for from one of their bigger budgets.
And would the, what's, what's it, the site, not the site plan, the survey for 181 Main, is that where we would have to put money for that?
Either that or a grant. And it depends on the selectman's appetite for moving forward on, on Millville's dime, or if we could get money from somewhere else.
Yeah, it's gonna be your better bet, because for a fact, if you go to the select board to ask for funds, they're gonna ask you, any motion you make about allocating funds, you need to tell them where you're gonna take that money from. And then it gets voted on, and it's a difficult process, so being that it's 122, is there any state money? And then it gets voted on. It's a difficult process. So being that it's one twenty-two, is there any state money? So if you went for a state, you know, bring it up to the D O T.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, if I.
There's different ways about that.
You know, it's a state route.
Yeah.
Right.
We can.
But other sidewalks, the state road.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. So I'll work with D P W, so I know there is.
But I, I mean, I know years ago I saw they had a, and thirteen thousand dollars and that was quite a bit. Maybe ten years ago.
If you listen to the budget, it's a big bit now.
But thirteen thousand dollars was allotted, say, ten years ago and on a dime if it got spent. You know, and then they took it back because it was never spent.
Yeah. So I, I do budget in the spring, I believe, because I remember it was asked of me last year. And I said whatever it was the year before, because I've been here for three months.
And that was April, right?
Yeah, I said pay for me and whatever you need, I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, so when I'm asked again, I'll, I'll let you know if there's any, I can look at old budgets and see what, what possibly could come.
Budget is submitted, I remember this year, was it April? So maybe we could put on the schedule for sometime in March to see if we want to talk as a group, if we can.
Yeah.
Ask for it.
Yeah, I don't know how much, you know, you need to really justify why, why the department needs it.
Just like when the elderly, elderly center needed an air conditioning system.
Yeah, exactly.
That's something you have to get, you have to get a.
Yeah.
To get an estimate and then propose it.
Yep.
But you have to take that money from somewhere else.
Yep.
So for us, it would be the stabilization account or free, uh.
Or free cash.
Cash, but that doesn't get certified until.
Town meeting?
Yeah.
So it depends, but yeah, I, I can keep that in mind for, for twenty twenty-four, whatever year's next. F Y twenty-five, yeah.
I would like to say, though, that in the last two town meetings, we presented three articles each and that's not, nothing, so. We, you were here probably.
Oh, yeah.
For that and we didn't, we couldn't even get a quorum to do it, right?
No, I moved in town twenty seventeen and then, um, and then, uh, Pam Maloney, um, you know, talked me into joining. Yeah, we were, um, that, that was a little, uh, rough go there and then, and then the COVID years and stuff, but I, I feel really good about the board right now.
Yeah, so we're making progress. I'm happy about it.
Yeah.
Right. Now, the, the, um, master plan also keeps mentioning between the master plan and this um, diagnostic that we should attempt to, um, change the village center to smaller lots. Just even if it's just, you know, it's just for that area, Main Street or so, so that we can have some of those smaller lots filled in and, what's the word? I know I wrote it somewhere here. Perpetuate, perpetuate what it looked like or what it was when Millville was a thriving little community and had little residential bakeries and stuff like that.
Yep.
But then again, septic.
My only fear is septic, that's it. It's my only fear on that, because I would love to have.
But if, if we don't put in something to try and change that we'll never know if anyone wants to try. I mean, if we were to get it lowered, that would have to, really, the building commissioner, people that know building and even the zoning board. If it were even feasible to build on a ten thousand square foot lot with septic.
With septic that you need, yeah, exactly. That's the thing. Um, I don't know our setbacks right now, but.
Right now, they're, they're thirty feet and they're saying zero, zero.
Zero, it should be zero, honestly. We already have plenty of zero. You know, we have.
The setbacks for village center.
Zero.
Are, are, are thirty feet.
That's crazy. Honestly, sorry to say, that's, that's not what I expected to hear.
Twenty on each side and the rear.
Yeah, so that, that is not conducive to a village center. I agree.
We have a lot of lots that would be, that are non-conforming now.
That, that's what I'm saying, I.
There are quite a few.
Bruno Antiques is zero, uh, the health sets on the corner here is zero, um.
I'm saying that there are lots that aren't being, that aren't filled around or.
Do you want a cross from Bruno Antiques? That's two lots right there, apparently.
Two?
Apparently, I can't even imagine.
That would have to be, be one.
That'd be the mug place?
Yeah, and, uh.
Yeah, the place they knocked down, the restaurant.
The mug. Mug pub.
Yeah, apparently that's two lots, which I, I can't even imagine, but that's what I've heard and seen on maps. Um.
That was one that was auctioned.
Yeah. Trying to find dimensional requirements, I just want to look at it too, yeah. Yeah.
So what's the instrument for making those changes? Is that the zoning board?
No, it's us.
It's us?
Yep. Um, I think if anything, maybe keep the lot size the same, but I can ma, I can have a discussion at least with Board of Health and Building to say, hey, is it possible to go down on this? But definitely the front setbacks, I'm gonna ask the building commissioner if he's comfortable.
Yeah, because they keep saying zero setback.
Zero setback is what you would do for a center of town. That's how you have businesses off the sidewalk. Yeah.
Right.
Nice little bench in front, so you can sip your coffee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll ask him how he feels, um. But if we want it to be a village center, then that's not conducive to that. Yeah, I agree.
Gets an oversight or just that no one's asked because.
Maybe in, at the time that this was made, when they wrote thirty, twenty, twenty, they didn't want it to look like a village center. They said village center and assumed that meant, you know what, we don't want it to be city-like, we don't want it to look like people can walk around and look at shops, we want it to be quiet and no one should walk around and no one should drive, you know, maybe, maybe they had this idea that's different than what we're looking for now.
Well, they nailed it.
Yeah, I want sleepy, um, yeah, may, maybe it's different, I.
Task failed successfully.
Yeah, yeah, I think this is, um, it would be better to have commerce, uh, business.
Eliminate the restriction that.
Yeah.
Stops people from doing it. I don't know that it will promote it.
Right.
But if you can eliminate an obstacle for somebody.
Right.
Exactly, it'll open it up. And I think all the little things we're doing will slowly promote the, the amount of business that we would want. We don't need to go crazy, we don't need big industry and it, but we want a small community that like, has something to do in town. You could walk there and get an ice cream cone, any, just something small would be really nice.
Which is, the way it was when it was first.
Yeah.
Built in nineteen sixteen. Yeah. Yeah.
We just need one of those. Get one of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, the mills were supporting it.
Have there been studies done on bringing water in from, from places and sort of like hard numbers?
It's like a million bucks a mile.
Okay.
It listens to the M E S stuff.
But it's been done and estimated at that.
And that's if you can get somebody to partner with you.
Okay.
So if Blackstone doesn't have the supply or Uxbridge doesn't have the supply, they don't want to do it.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
But where do they get their water from wells?
Uh, I think Blackstone is on their well, because I think I heard something in one of the meetings that they wanted, maybe by a school, to drill another well.
There was a recent water project on Providence Street where water, I think, or pipes were run from North Smithfield.
I think that's because of contamination of.
For those, for those wells on Providence?
Up Quaker and Albert, I think, I think in the same area or no?
No.
No, the Kempton Road?
Nope.
No?
Down, down near where I live.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I don't know what else.
Well, it had something to do with the area, um, on Central Street that got, um, someone purchased it and was dumping.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, they were.
That's up, up central, you can go up to Quaker and then I think it's up past that area.
That's where the dumping was.
Yeah, if, if you go Central Street and you take a left at the four-way stop onto Providence, yes.
Yeah.
So that is, that is Providence Street. And so they, they, um, they did a water project and some of those houses had wells with contamination in them. I didn't know what the purpose of the, of the, um.
I think that's what it was.
Of the project was.
Contamination.
Okay.
And I think it goes across, it must go across central, not that way.
Okay, I know that they had some construction, you know, going on and there was a detour through Alfonso States and, and, and whatnot. But we do have a connection to North Smithfield now.
I know, um, Peter, the town administrator is very in tune with all of the options for water right now.
Okay.
For other reasons, so.
And excited to.
Yeah, so I, I, I know he's, um, definitely looking into any opportunities, I think.
This is also a big thing, there's gonna be hypothetically, there should be money available from the D E P because if we apply for grants and we've mentioned P F A S, then we get not approval, but we'll get better consideration.
Priority.
Yeah, yeah, priority, yeah.
Of P F A S, but we tag it onto M E S. So those are the things that they're playing around with.
Okay, all right. Because, yeah, that King property is huge, but if you wanted to have like a, a lot of units in there, you'd almost have to be like, okay, what's the water solution for it?
Yeah, where's the, uh, processed water go?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, these are trigonometry problems, unfortunately.
Um, do we wanna?
Um, I can give you a little planner's update.
Okay.
Yeah, that's usually. Um, so I have an appointment scheduled for you guys for the next meeting, which is.
Two weeks from.
Two weeks from today, whatever that is.
Right.
Twenty-seven, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, so it's an appointment with, um, someone who has a property that they're looking to, to do something with. Um, they tw, they want to use a road, I think it's like, they don't want to make it a subdivision that can't explain it until they show it, I think. I'm not gonna attempt it. Because it, it'll be a bit of a, they have a lawyer who's gonna explain their, argue their case. Um, I am also gonna get, uh, I'm gonna do some research before then to make sure that, that I'm.
Do we have an address?
Um, I will have plans for you, so I'm gonna send them to you, um, this week. And I'll, I'll send you any research that I find, just, but I, I don't want to word it wrong now, so I'll, I'll wait. Um, and then.
It's rare that we get one of these.
Yeah, it's, it's a very, it's an interesting case.